Robotics Club to Chess Club. It's an opportunity for their interests to drive their education. And then athletics, team participation and community support. That's prevalent in most high schools. I mean, the high school is a hub for the community and those activities and those athletics are an opportunity for people to come see what their kids are doing and an opportunity for them to see how well their students are participating in school. And then Mr. Morales is going to talk about, I think, one of the most important aspects or contributing factors in graduation rate is improved staff.
We caught up here. You're going pretty fast. Good job. On the in-services and professional stuff that we do, I would say right now our professional development, we geared it to two things, learning and instruction. We really believe if you improve student learning and the teachers do a better job teaching, we're going to have a better school. So that's what our professional development's doing. Building relationships, I can't say enough, that's where we're at. It's what we do. But I think the other one is holding each other accountable. I think we do a very good job at the high school of holding each other accountable. Teachers holding administrators accountable, administrator holding teachers accountable, and students holding teachers accountable. I think when everybody's held accountable and make sure everybody's doing their job, then you're going to get the results that we're getting. And I think the shared leadership is also a big part of that accountability piece. When other people are trying to lead besides administrators in the building, it seems like people follow better. And I will say we've done a great job of that. Professional learning communities, basically, we know that's why we went there. Smaller groups, so that when we're meeting with our teachers every day, we're talking about kids. Talking about how kids are doing, how kids are successful, how kids are not successful, why they're not successful, and that's what our PLCs are for. And then I can't say enough about our SROs. We have a very safe campus. You know, there's a lot of rumors out there, a lot of things happening. These two guys that work with us every day, they can tell you a little bit of what happens, but a lot of times they're bored because they do such a good job. They're working, the kids know that they're very busy. They're very, they're not bored. They're very visible. When it's very cold, they don't like to go out to the parking lot, I can say that sometimes. But they do an exceptional job. And our school's very safe. It's a good learning environment. We have created a good, safe learning environment. I have a student here shaking her head. No one is scared. Everybody works, walks through the halls. It's a friendly place. It's a good learning environment that we've created.
All right, and I'm last to talk about iPads, and I'm giggling because I'm starving, so I will stick to the five minutes. I did bring two teachers tonight because this year we've created a technology professional development team from within our staff. And so in the, well, first of all, four years ago about this time of year, I presented to you for the second or third time, really encouraging you to vote on iPads. And four years later, I'm still that passionate about that decision that you made. I think it was a great decision. We are seeing improvement in the use of them, both student and staff, every year. So I'm going to talk about a few things, and I'm going to let the iPad team take over. And before I even do that, I have to say again, thanks to Casey, Laney, and Roxy because we couldn't do anything that we do without them. I mean, they, they support us 100%, so they are invaluable to us. In the past, we've kind of got up and we've talked about broken iPads and discipline, and I said, "I'm not going to focus on that this year. I want to talk about some of the innovative things we're doing." And so I'm just going to give a couple of examples about college and career readiness and differentiation. I require my staff to turn in lesson plans, and part of college and career readiness are to do Quad D lessons. But I had a teacher, Mr. Cruz, I'll share his name, who on his lesson plans this week submitted photos of kids taking pictures of different things in the classroom with their iPads and then putting the scientific terms and examples next to those pictures. They were finding relevant examples. He could have just done the old vocabulary thing of, you know, spell out the word, draw a picture, but he had them using the technology to support the learning. And I think that is what college and career readiness is about. We require our teachers to do Quad D lessons, and I can't think of very many who do them without the technology, specifically the iPads. And all of that does result in increased engagement. And then cost savings, just two examples. We did not print our student handbooks this year. They're online, so when I call a student into my office and he or she has broken a rule, I say, "Take out your iPad. Let's find the policy on the iPad. Highlight it for me. Did you not know that existed?" "Well, yes, I did. I signed off on it electronically." "Okay, I want to review that policy with you. I don't have to waste the paper." And then this year, we took a huge step, second semester, we didn't print student schedules. So just automatically saved us 2,000 copies. When they got there that day, we said, "Open your iPad or your cellphone. We don't care what you use. Look up your class schedule. We're not printing them." So we've had some cost savings that are obvious, and we make, we take baby steps every year there to become paperless, but overall, it's, we're starting to see the rewards and cost savings. So I'm going to let Tyler Gates and Tracy Meinzner talk a little bit about the iPad team that we have.
Okay, well, I'm Tyler Gates. I teach computer classes, two computer classes in the freshman academy at the high school. So I'm in a little bit of a unique situation. Being in a computer lab, a teacher might be a little bit apprehensive when you're handed an iPad. You know, you look at it one of two ways. Either you're going to have to completely change everything you do, or it just kind of works itself out. And what I found to be the case is, it has sort of worked itself out. It's become second nature. It's made my job a lot easier, and the real benefit is that it's provided our students with a lot more options. So in the past, if I had my students create a PowerPoint, if they're in a computer lab, that might be it. You're doing a PowerPoint. Now I can say, "Here's a project I want you to do. You can use PowerPoint. You can use Prezi. You can use Keynote. You can take it home, work on it." 90% of my students, I think, have internet access at home. They take it home, they turn it on a backpack, and I grade it from the comfort of my couch. So it's great for teachers and students, both. It really is. And to piggyback on what Mrs. Scott said, our team has been great. They've set, I mean, countless hours, getting things the way we need them. So, good job, guys. Everything works well. We appreciate it. So what they did was they kind of reached out, and they grabbed different teachers from different content areas to kind of make up a team. I think we have 15, around 15, staff members, and we kind of make up this team, and we've done, we speak of PLCs, and those have been really well received. Teachers really like that. We get different content areas together and say, "What are you doing? What works? How are you bumping your lessons up?" Things like that. And they're great. We helped out with some in-service days. We did some in-service at the beginning of the school year this year. That was also well received, and we learned as much from the other teachers, I think, as we teach them. We get lots of good ideas. Sort of things is really well. James talked about kind of the culture at the high school. I think we've moved from teachers trying to figure out how to use the iPads to now it just becomes second nature. It's a part of our culture, and we've kind of focused on seeing some of the really cool things students do with them. I mean, I get so many, "Oh, cool" moments from those freshmen that you like as a teacher, or really. And that's kind of their way of saying, "This is cool." They won't come out and say it, but you can kind of see it in their eyes. So we're just really glad to have it, and thank you, guys, for getting those for us. We love them.
And I have to say, being on the iPad team is like the coolest committee ever. Most things, you're like, "Oh, we have a meeting again today." I peg me, it's like, "Yes, yes, like, hey, I'll see you at the meeting." And we, it's fun because we get to share exciting ideas every time we get together. Like, "Hey, did you see this game the kids were playing? Could totally use that." It's amazing, being in a committee where you're excited about the work you're doing. I'm just going to share a couple stories, I think. I don't have data or anything, but. In-service day that we did in the fall, normally, as a teacher, when you hear in-service, you kind of feel a little sick. Just like being honest, you get that feeling, you're like, "Okay, here we go." And it was amazing in service. How many people came up to me afterward and said, "Thank you. Thank you so much. I learned so much. That was amazing. What are you doing this again?" I didn't get to hit all of the sections I wanted to go to. They had choices about where they wanted to go, and they really got to learn what they needed to learn. Some people were still learning how to use Notability and Keynote, which they needed, and some people were learning how to create iBooks. Either way, I think it was amazingly helpful for all the teachers, and it was kind of fun to do.
It was.
And I learned stuff, like, I was like, "Oh, you do that in Notability? I thought I was teaching this, but, all right, everybody, you hit the voice button." So it was pretty cool. The other thing is PLCs. I did a PLC a couple of months ago, and I love the trade academy, but they're a little hesitant about the iPads as a whole because they're very hands-on group. They like the things they can touch. And we did an in-service where we brainstormed, our PLC where we brainstormed ideas for how we could take notes, use the iPad, and completely transform them. How we could take PowerPoints and transform them using the iPad. And we went 80 out of the 85 minutes because we were bouncing so many ideas off each other. And it was amazing, instead of having someone tell us, "Here's the iPad, how to use it," being able to create together ways to use the iPad more effectively was really powerful. It was weird because in a PLC, we were like, "Oh, um, all right, we got another hour to teach. Better go," sort of deal. And the last story I have is about engagement. We shared with all the teachers, we decided this app website called Kahoot where students get to, you basically can quiz them on information, check their understanding, but it sets it up like a game. It's a competition. How fast can you answer the question? How many do you get right? Who's on the leaderboard? And I had students one day begging me to make them a quiz on Kahoot. I have never had students, "Miss, can you please have a quiz on the book?" And I was like, "What? Yeah, make a Kahoot on the book. All right, I will quiz you if you insist." So, so for me, I can't imagine the classroom without the iPads. It has transformed everything.
That's all I have.
Questions? Can we sit down?
Just an example of the leadership I'm talking about, guys. Shared leadership, or having teachers lead teachers, because we have some of the best experts in our district and at the high school, and we're making use of that now. Okay, to summarize the report, I definitely can say that Garden City High School is headed in the correct direction and has programs in place to be successful in the future. In saying that, I know that school improvement is a continuous effort and that you have to constantly monitor it, and if you adjust it correctly, you'll get the desired results. Thank you. Sorry about the long time.
Any questions? Nice presentation. Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business now, and Chad doesn't need any questions. What are you talking about? Everybody knows Chad. And Rich Harp and Doug Keller, thank you for this presentation, but are you not motivated by what we're doing here on this street?
This has been the best part of my day.
This is so, it is amazing. I mean, we're talking model district stuff here. There's a lot going on, so.
Pretty impressed.
Yeah. All right, Jeff, you're on.
Well, you guys got the packet, right?
Yes.
They called stuff, so you guys got any questions in the packet?
Appreciate the pictures, kind of idea of what this is going to look like.
So what pictures, I'm struggling to get some, but.
Well, it works.
Well, first of all, thanks. I mean, I sent the packet out with some pictures and stuff, and since we last met, Dr. Athan and I are sitting down and had cell meetings and met with Randy Griselle and went over that contract, and that's, and they're both speaking of the devil.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and introduce your, your support team here?
Well, they're here for moral support, and I asked them, wanted to speak, they said, "No, we're just here for moral support." You know, Mr. K Stater, Rich Harp, so we got to give them those kudos. He's my, he's my board president for their branch. And then we got Rock Chalk, Jay Hawk, Doug Keller.
And they sit next to each other, right?
We love each other.
Well, we've been harassing Mitch the whole time. He's been ignoring us, but Doug's my corporate board president because we're association now. We got two branches now. We got the branch in Dodge and the branch here. So we're two branches, so they're here to help. I told him about 6:30, here it is, 7:40, so I'm going to hold them dearly, so.
Especially since the game's on.
Yep.
Is there a score yet?
Oh, somebody, oh, you know, okay.
Well, but we had those meetings with the people we needed to have meetings with, sitting down with the city, sitting down with school. Two principals were there as well, and Kavi, I don't see him, he's already jetted out. Kavi was there for you guys. A couple of concerns, that building that sits on that parking lot, you know, we changed our location. You guys will leave that building there that sits in the parking lot. The city will work a deal to get the parking lot done. Don't know when that will happen. If we act fast and get it done, they'll give us a temporary permit in lieu of that. But they will, in that conversation, they will do the parking lot. There's also a little steel building there that's for restrooms. Of course, they're going to take that out of there, and they'll move it somewhere else so we can tie into the restroom facilities there and save us some cost savings there. We'll open up our restrooms to the whole parking facility, so it'll be open year-round because I think those only shut down in September or something like that, so. And there's still some nice days in October and November they can still go out there and play, so we'll have our bathrooms open for them as well. So it's a great partnership with us and the school district and the city, this whole thing that we want to do up there. I did go down and neighborhood people, Mr. Cruz asked me to do that. I talked to about 15 neighbors, talked to all the businesses around there. None of them have a problem with that. In fact, I had a conversation today with Homestead, asked if there's similar people in their community would like to come walk because we have an indoor walking track around there, around the courts. He said, "Yeah, we don't have to meet outside people yet, but, you know, when that happens, that might be a potential partnership," so. So we're open for that. I mean, the big, the big thing we want to do is just have this big collaboration because that's, you know, with us being a nonprofit, we've got to have that. We've got to lean on you guys for the land, lean on you guys for the parking lot, lean on the city to help us with the parking lot and stuff like that. But it's also going to be a great partnership because you guys have a need for extra gym space up there, you know, so. We first wanted to go to Horace Good, Dr. Athan, Dr. Carlin, I think, had a discussion, and they said, "K H, great idea, great concept." I think the two principals can vouch that it's a great opportunity for them. I think they're having a price of six a.m. in the mornings for eighth grade boys or something like that.
Our instructional league is practicing from six, six to 7:30 every morning.
So, you know, eliminate that because then they can have the dome at your school. So, I mean, to me, it's a win-win situation. I always think it's a no-brainer, but you guys, you guys can get the present proposal and go forward to go up the puzzle. The city, city's not going to have any problem giving us permit. It should mean all building codes. Only thing that we're kind of hashing out is a sprinkler system. A sprinkler system in a dome, how are you going to put it in there? No one ever has a sprinkler system in it, so we're hashing that out because it's code and how big it is, so. But that seems to be the only thing that's kind of holding us back. I don't think it's a, a deal breaker by any means, but. So that's where we're at. Any questions for me or any that else on agreement?
We are needing to take action tonight, specifically on, well, on the agreement in general, but specifically the use of the land located at Kenneth Henderson as well as use of the parking lot at Kenneth Henderson. So if there's any questions, follow-up questions from the previous presentation, now it's time to ask. Gene?
I did have a question. I kind of looked over at the lease and use agreement, and I, I know that there is some standard time frames for when the district is most likely to use it and when the body is most likely to use it, but I, I didn't see, and I might have missed it. When that doesn't happen, or when the district needs to use it, when, what would be why time, why wants to use it? Is it just, is it, we don't seem to have a method for noticing each other or working out that? Is there anything in there to?
Right now, in the leasing use agreement, it's got eight to five, I believe, that the district will be able to use the facility. If we were going to use a facility beyond that, before that time or after that time, we would have to take issue with it.
And, and I think that's probably how it would work, but I think they, there ought to be some sort of a decision there to set forth that that's the procedure to give, to make sure that it is.
Well, it says on page two, and like, like Dr. Green says, and mutually agreed by both parties, that it's something we would work out with both principals.
Right, I just didn't see it in the actual agreement. I thought that would be a way to avoid problems.
We do have Randy Griselle here this evening, who is deep hearted, okay?
I can certainly add something to clarify that. I anticipated that we'd set out some general parameters in the agreement, but certainly the parties would have to work together on scheduling conflicts or scheduling changes. And I think that's just, that's inherent with the type of agreement that we have. So I can look at it again.
I think so, too. I just thought that you would be helpful to, to make that claim ahead of time.
One thing that I, I think I want to add to the agreement is some type of language that construction needs to commence on or before a reasonable date. Because if you approve the agreement tonight, then why approve the agreement, let's say, this month or next month? And then the building doesn't commence for three years. I don't know that that's what the district would have. Believe it to be in its interest, so I'll probably put something in there, Chad, that construction is to commence on or before September 1st, 2015, or something that's reasonable to the, to the why. If it doesn't, then the, the district can terminate the agreement. It's kind of a safeguard for the district, but we'll talk to Chad about it and see what is possible.
How long are you, do you think you'll need to raise the balance?
As soon as, we work at FireEye Associates, so everybody's a check for 1.5 billion. I'll call, I'll have somebody check, and if we don't, no. So people pass it on to you.
I don't know.
You know, it's hard to say. I mean, when we raised 2.5 billion, you know, the first, first million and a half we did in about six months, you know. Don't know what's going on in the community, what else is happening. You know, I think we've got a pretty good track record on what we've done in the community, how we run our programs and what we do in the service. So I think we'd be successful, but you never know. Nothing would, once you go out there, start raising it, you know, and see what happens. I think it's a great opportunity for our community and opens up avenues for everyone to have, be healthy lifestyles. I mean, the big thing I hate is we're kicking people out of the gym every night.
I think that's.
You don't want to.
All right, any questions before we hopefully obtain a question? And the, the, the actual agreement wasn't in this core packet that I'm aware of? No, okay. Okay, so it would include, you want to make some motion, it would include amendments such as what Randy Griselle mentioned. I don't think there are any other amendments that we would have discussed this time.
So this is basically agreement and concept.
Well, it's an actual.
Now, I drafted a formal agreement, so, but you could, you could give approval and concept at this particular point, subject to me revising the agreement just a little bit. I want you to look at it. If you have, look if you read the actual agreement, and I don't want you to approve it. So I, I, I thought it was in my, my information.
Yeah, I know. All right.
Okay. Well, if some of the board members haven't looked at it, I would certainly want you to look at it.
It just wasn't in this tonight's packet. It, it's been in a packet before. It just wasn't in tonight's. Am I speeding up? Okay. Okay. So, any further discussion or is there a motion being?
My move that we approve the YMCA post-dump project with the district at Kenneth Henderson in the school as revised in this, uh, Mr. Griselle, is the?
Proposed for revision.
Proposed for revision.
Second.
Motion by Gene, second by Tim. Do we need to delineate what those provisions are within the motion?
I think you'll have the, you'll have the agreement at some point next meeting, and then you can look at it and decide if that's actually what you want to approve. But our discussion tonight was maybe a little more definitive language on scheduling and an escape clause for the district that the why doesn't, isn't successful in fundraising and can't commence construction by a date certain.
As stated by Mr. Griselle. Well, okay, so any, any discussion on the motion on the floor? All those in favor, signal by raising your hand. Motion carries. Awesome. Yay!
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, everyone.
You've done a nice job.
Thanks for. Okay, moving on to our next item of business, item of unfinished business, specifically. Dr. Atha, would you like to introduce our next topic, which is the resolution?
Well, you, you talked about this at your last meeting, and it's a resolution regards to the enforcement of city traffic ordinances on USD 4.7 grounds. In particular, we're probably focusing more on the new high school than anywhere else. And as, as James said, we, we have a safe high school. Kids aren't afraid to go to school. But it is a large high school. It's probably the fourth largest high school in the state. And at two times a day, it's probably, it's the only place in town where I feel like we got rush hour traffic. And it's about 20 minutes long. And for the most part, I think the kids do a great job. I think the patrons and the community do a great job, and the teachers do a great job driving that circle loop. But we do have our issues there. It's 15 mile an hour, and everybody's going the same direction. And I feel like with this resolution where city ordinances can, traffic ordinance can be enforced, will add to an already safe environment at the high school. I am recommending that you, that you do approve this resolution this evening. At the same time, if you do approve it, we'll come back to you by the end of the school year, and we'll give you a report of how this resolution is working. And then we'll come back to you again about this time next year and let you know how it's working. I'm confident that it's going to work. But if it's not, the board can rescind the resolution at that time. And we'll be right back where we were before you approved. We do have some folks here this evening to answer questions if you need to. Obviously, we have Randy Griselle, your, your counsel, as well as the city's council, and he drafted the resolution. We have Jennifer Cunningham, the city's prosecuting attorney here this evening, Captain Cruz, who oversees the SROs, and we have our two SROs here as well, Randy Umrue and Ben Wigg. So they gladly entertain any questions. And when this was presented to you, it was fully supported and recommended by the principals at the high school as well as the teachers at the high school in an effort to increase the safety for the kids, for the teachers, and for the patrons.
Thank you, Dr. Atha. And this, this resolution would go into effect February 1st?
It would go into effect February 1st, but there is going to be an education component to this because the kids have gotten to know what's, that this is going to be in effect and what it means. So there will be an education component done by the SROs, the principals, and I don't know who else at the high school. But the intent is for it to go into effect February 1, February 1, and that's what the resolution says. But if, Kavi, if they don't feel like they've got the kids ready for it to go in, it might be a little bit later than that.
It really seems that putting the resolution in effect is going to do a lot of the work in and of itself. Just by having it there gives the SROs the ability to take action if necessary, whereas now, I, the students really don't have any negative consequences to their actions in the parking lot with regards to safety. And so I think just that, that education piece between the resolution they passed, if it does pass, and the onset, I think that period of time is going to be very instrumental in curbing behavior and the safety of driving at the high school campus, so.
We've had a lengthy discussion on this subject last, well, a month ago, before the holidays. Is there any new discussion items or new questions that need to be answered before we entertain a motion here? Yes, Mark?
Just from my own side, to wrap my mind around it, what is the difference between a Garden City police officer and an SRO? I can answer that.
Awesome.
Okay.
Captain Courtney Pruitt, I'm the patrol division commander. Part of my responsibility is to supervise the SROs. And the long and short of it, there's no difference. Their job duties, they're specifically assigned to specific schools, and that's their sole function. Unless they have something that's pressing at the police department that they have to do, training, or they're sick or on holiday, that's their assignment.
Seventy-five percent of the SROs are paid for a rented history. That's basically about seventy-five percent of the work time, and the other twenty-five percent would be the summer time in the city, where the police department pays for the other twenty-five percent.
Great question.
Follow-up question. As I understand it, the Garden City Police Department has issued tickets to folks on that high school loop. And so it appears to me that that can be done without the resolution.
I don't think so.
No, sir, we, it's private property, so barring a certain traffic...
I have written a citation for reckless driving or for hit-and-run, because those particular crimes allow to be cited on private property. But there's just a small handful of ones that actually can be cited, not speeding or stop signs, or any of the regular traffic ordinances that has to reach out to reckless driving or hit-and-run, something like that.
So if a student is, or a staffer, or a parent, is going thirty miles an hour around that loop, which is twice the speed limit, they can be cited for reckless driving?
If you can meet the elements that would show that negligence towards people's safety, if there were people out, but just going thirty miles an hour around the loop, you'd have to articulate how that was reckless driving with that indifference to people's safety or property, as opposed to just speeding.
So twenty-five miles an hour and people jumping out of the way, and the SOR, SRO cannot issue a citation currently?
Sir, I think we're talking about articulation here. People jumping out of the way, really, it doesn't matter how fast they're going, if people are jumping out of the way, that means they're driving reckless. If we can articulate that, then we can write it for reckless. So the speed limit portion, I mean, it's really all about semantics and articulation.
That's great, I appreciate all of that.
Yes, sir.
Good clarification. Any other questions? About motion?
To take a motion, we accept the proposal as provisioned.
Motion by Tom. Second by Alex. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by raising your hand. All those, signal by raising your hand. Motion carries. Thank you all for your time, I appreciate it. So this resolution will tentatively go into effect February 1st unless more time is needed for education at the school. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the business. Dr. Carlin?
All right. Clarification on that one.
So if, when we revisit this, as you had described, can we send that if it appears necessary?
Absolutely. And we go right back to where we were before you approved it.
I have a question, too. I got the thought that the anticipation piece would also include the staff of schools, so that they're important as well.
And parents as well. Because certainly...
Oh, definitely.
The way parents pick up sometimes is sort of, creates a hazardous situation.
When I see Mark drive, people jump out of the way.
I was hoping you wouldn't bring that up.
Well, what I'm also wondering is, there is a website with our municipal code on it. There's also a book with all the traffic, municipal traffic ordinances. Perhaps we can maybe work with the city to get a definite electronic format that we can put on the iPads, we're not spending money on paper, but that way they actually have the city ordinances and what the possible ramifications are if they violate any of the ordinances.
That's great.
That's good.
And using Skyward to let parents know what policy changes are, things like that. You, that's your job.
I know, that's why I'm listening real quick. That's why I'm sticking around to listen.
I'm sure they have a log blast that would be happy to look at this and inform the rest.
I thought I heard Laura going in some time today.
I could get the bug, I've got the bug.
Don't bill the hours.
Thanks, James. Appreciate you coming tonight.
Appreciate you.
Dr. Carlin?
All right, well, we spent most of the following policy playing catch-up for some of KESB's, kind of routine updates. And right about the time we got done with that in December, they sent out their December updates for the coming spring. So we have a little bit smaller list, there are a few more that we're gonna go through. There's two that are on tonight that primarily deal with superintendent position. CEA is just kind of a routine update and just deals with the qualifications. And it used to be the state issued a superintendent certificate, now they issued a district leadership license. So this is basically just a semantic thing to keep the language in your policy consistent with, with the state licensing regulations, so... And I think the last time we dealt with this was back in 1991. The second one deals with superintendent recruitment, and this is actually a policy that we had revised back in May of 2011. We had a little piece regarding succession planning. KESB's update to this one basically identifies the option that the board would have to use a professional search service, should the board elect to do that. Certainly, you would have that option, whether you have that in the policy or not, but it just kind of clarifies what's a little bit more of a common practice among districts. And then we've added back, the reason this was starred, we've added back a comment about succession planning that the board chose to add in 2011. So tonight's the first reading on those. If you have any questions, certainly happy to entertain those, or if something comes up before the next meeting, then please, we know, we don't hear anything, then we'll have them on the consent agenda next time. And if we do, then we'll give you answers to whatever questions you want to have.
Thank you. Okay. I think the pamphlet's down to Dr. Ethan, there's a government relations work form. Do you have a name?
Twenty-second, twenty-third this month.
Okay. If anyone's interested, we'll pass the pamphlet down this way, and Jean's had it, but I don't, I can't, I don't want to look at it. Just let someone know. Thank you, Jean. Any other, any discussion items?
Just a comment. We were invited to an elected official launch at this department, which is Mark Fenton for Shea Sinclair.
Yeah.
And that's the same night of our board meeting, I requested President Biden, who will be unable to do it.
Okay.
If you don't want to.
I will, thank you.
All right. That way we're, we're as cool as we were then.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Good comment, thank you, gentlemen. I'll be with you. No.
I just want to mention, I went to the Chambers Legislative Coffee just a couple, about a week or so ago, and I, there were some comments that were made that I found rather disconcerting with regard to schools and school finance. But I really appreciated most of the legislators' comments with regard to how complex school finance is and how you can't just take one little piece and say, "Oh, this is why there's a problem," or "They're asking for this for this, so obviously they have so much money," or something like that. And in particular, Representative Jennings' comments, and also Representative Dahl being able to kind of shed some light onto that. I know we're all very scared about the shortfall, and I know the teachers are very worried about papers and what that's going to do to the future. Unfortunately, we didn't get a lot of comfort at the Legislative Coffee, but I feel like we are very well-represented up there for educational needs. And I believe the next one is, it's in February, February 21st at 10 o'clock. I know we're in between then, but I would really encourage all of us to go there. Jean also made some really great comments in response to some, in response to some that were made. And I just think it would be great if we were there in full force to let people know exactly why we need the money that we need.
Anything else? Next board of education meeting will take place on Monday, February 2nd at 6:00 PM in the board meeting room at the C E office. We do have a need for executives, two executive session discussions. I move that we move into executive session for the purposes of consultation with board legal counsel on matters which are privileged and the attorney-client relationship, which is discussed in that session, would waive that privilege beginning at 8:10 and ending at 8:25. Motion by Dora.
Sure.
Motion by Alex. All those in favor? Motion carries.